Good evening. As a preliminary matter, this is John Regan, Chair of the Auburn Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Ronald Brooks.
Present.
Todd Corain.
Present.
Rokesh Nalan.
Present.
Sierra, is she online?
No.
Sierra Samara is not here. Town officials and employees, participating, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Town Planner Adam Manar.
Here.
Staff Assistant Danielle Chamberlain-Roberts.
Here.
Good evening. This is open meeting of the Town Auburn Planning Board of Tuesday, March 28th. Now called over at 7:00 PM. This meeting being conducted in both person and remotely. Consisted with Governor Baker's executive order, March 12th, 2020, extended to June 16th, 2021. This meeting, the planning board is convening in person and by remote access. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, call 1-312-757-3121, and enter access code 133747477. Or the public can join via computer at gotomeeting.com/join/133747477. Remote access information has been posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Television. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight recording tonight's meeting? Being none, accordingly, those members of the planning board, employees, and members of the public will participate remotely. Please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. And please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Please rise and join me in the salute to the flag. I believe this is the flag of the United States of America. As the republic, we stand for a nation under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice of all.
Mr. President.
All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website. Meeting business ground rules. I, Chair of the Board, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to speak clearly and into the microphone in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. I would like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, and each of the planning board members to please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted my consent. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. First on the agenda is A&R Hampton Street in Eaton Ave. Who's running the air representing them? Please go to the mic over there, please.
There is no.
Huh?
So, John Plifka from McCarty Engineering here representing the Danquodale Realty Trust. We're presenting eight A&R lots fronting on Eastern Ave and Hampton Street. Seven of the lots fronting on Hampton Street and the eighth fronting on Eaton Ave. In addition to the eight lots, we are erecting a slight encroachment that Eaton Ave originally, or previously had on the parcel. And at that, I'd open it up to questions.
Anybody in the audience have any questions? Samara, do you have any questions?
No.
Rokesh, you have any questions?
Chair, one question. So on the parcel A, that's the plot that's being conveyed to the city, their town?
That's correct.
Anything else, Rokesh?
Um, no, that's fine.
Ryan, do you have any questions?
I don't have that. Little schematic here.
Todd, do you have any?
I don't.
One thing I found confusing is you have eight lots. Eighth lot being on Eaton Ave. It's actually lot one that's on Eaton Ave. The other seven are on.
Oh, correct. Did I misspeak on that? I'm sorry. Seven of the lots are on Hampton Street, and one of the lots, Lot 1, is on Eaton Ave.
So there's quite a drop off between Hampton Street and these lots. It's like straight down.
Yeah.
How do you guys plan on making that lot accessible from Hampton Street?
So we haven't gone through the grading exercise yet. We were subdividing the lots, and then later down the line, that'll be addressed.
Is there still a chance you may want to bring in a road from Eaton Ave?
At this time, no. Not.
I noticed you left enough space to put one in between the lots.
We're just here for the A&R lots tonight.
Just grade coming off Hampton Street.
Yeah, well, they're not a plan.
The fact that either you're on there at this time, you said you don't know whether or not you'll be bringing a road in.
Yeah, tonight I'm just here for the A&R lots.
They can't do any building here till they come before us again anyway, so. You all set? May I have a motion to approve the subdivision on Hampton and Eaton Ave as shown?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Those in favor, Samara?
Aye.
Rokesh? Ron?
Aye.
Aye.
Self turn, ring as an aye or as a vote? You're all set.
Thank you.
It's 28.
My law. What? Oh, it's a requirement of schedule, public care and some people. The man's first.
Gotcha.
It's starting.
Do you have any more plans to sign?
No.
Let you get up and speak at.
If you're working.
Next on the agenda is applicant Kim Lee Horn, Associate, requesting site plan approval under Section 3.2.6.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a self-storage facility, 319 Washington Street, Auburn Madison 1501, map 42, parcel 31. Is there anyone here representing Kim Lee Horn? May I have a motion to open this hearing?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Self turn, ring as an aye or as a vote? Now open.
All right. Good evening, board members. Thank you for hearing our application. My name is Casey Hart, and I've got Russell Oerlich with me as well. We're from Kim Lee Horn. We're the civil engineers for this project. So tonight, we're presenting on a self-storage project that is located off of Washington Street. It's just south of the Santander Bank. So this existing site is undeveloped. It's around nine acres in total. There are wetlands in the western corner of the property and a national grid easement that bisects the property as well. Our application is proposing two bi-level self-storage facilities. The southern building, which is rectangular in shape, that will house drive-up storage facilities. And then the more square building, which is to the north, is going to be climate-controlled. There's around 140,000 square feet in total of gross floor area. As I mentioned, it's a bi-level buildings on both of them. Access to the site is provided by a full access off of Washington Street. We did perform a traffic study, and this use is only going to generate 13 vehicle trips in the AM peak hour from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM, and 22 trips in the PM peak hour from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. So in total, these volumes in the peak hours are less than 1% of the total roadways volumes. So definitely a use that generates a small amount of additional trips to this roadway network. Additional improvements that we're proposing are utilities, stormwater management, and landscaping. Due to the presence of the wetlands in the western corner of the site, we did have to go before the zoning board to get a special permit approval for increasing the amount of impervious on the site. So we did go before them back in January, and we got their approval. We are not planning to impact these wetlands at all, nor are we going to touch the 100-foot buffer around those. So far, we've received comments from the building department, water and sewer district, fire department, and National Grid as well. And we're amidst addressing comments from them. So with that brief overview, open it up to any questions. We also do have James Hanaran here as well. He's with Triton Storage. So if there's any specific questions for him, we can pull him up as well.
Anybody in the audience have any questions? Ryan, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
You gotta come up to the mic, please.
Like I said, Gary Burke, Ran 148 Millbury Street. Where is this exactly located, the old Tupco Building?
No, it's just south of the Santander Bank, so.
You know where the crackin' road is? You got Santander Bank, the next lot between Santander Bank and Old Common Road are reporting.
Right. That access, if I'm not mistaken, was originally, any access to that piece of property was coming through Santander Bank, number one.
I don't know about that.
Because number two, they didn't allow for a curb cut on that Route 20 at the time they put Santander Bank in. Then the other question I'm going to have there is a multi-level. At what level are you going to bring that material up to and build on? And how tall is this going to be as a multi-level? Because my house is right there, looking at it.
As far as the curb cut, they gotta get permission from Mass DOT for that. We can't give them permission for that.
You probably have to look back and see where your access property entrance and exit only through Santander Bank's ex- curb cut, not Route 20 back in the day. If you look at your history.
I don't know, maybe Santander Bank owned the whole thing at once, and now they sold that lot off? I have no idea.
Santander Bank, if I'm not mistaken, is leased property from William Reisner.
I have no idea.
I'll have to go back to the records.
I have no clue about that.
Yeah, somebody has to look that up, because that's our recollection and the whole, we recall that happening. Because then if you have another access of Route 20, and you have... What's the next road down there? Old Common.
Common Road.
Old Common is a disaster as it is.
Well, then you got the other street coming in right across from Old Common.
Absolutely. That's a disaster. So my biggest concern would be the elevation as a multi-story. Because I, like I say, I live in that red house in the corner of that hayfield right there.
Yep. Appreciate your comments.
If I'm not mistaken, that property is going to be raised up because of the water table as well, just like Santander did. Because when, back in the day, when they took that material out to fill the Worcester dump, to cover the dump, they took that too low. Then they had to obviously raise it back up. History will show.
Yeah, that was really well below the Route 20 when they got done with it.
Of course. It still is now. That lot still is. Thank you.
Can you address his concerns about?
Yeah, so we have not uncovered any covenants or restrictions that, you know, require us to put access through the Santander. We can look into it, just to make sure we're checking our boxes there. In regards to the elevations, it is going to be a two-story. And I'll confirm with our architect the exact height and get your response on that. But we are proposing to keep the site relatively level with Washington Street. So we actually have a retaining wall in the rear of the site. So it's going to be sitting lower. Is your property behind the site, or?
Directly above it to that side.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Or on top of it. It used to be that whole field can be done with a road.
Yeah.
We're just concerned about the height, number one. And if you're, I don't know, that's, we're not the historian, historian, but I think you guys give your homework on, I think, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that's going to be raised up because of the water table.
Yeah, we'll look into it.
I'll take the research on that, you know, so. How tall will the building be from there?
Two stories. I believe it's 20 to 25 feet. But I'll get you the exact, you know.
It's a sloped lot, so it won't go above the back, the back height. The back height of the lot, the building will be below that. So if you're above, you're on the back side, right? Right? So it would be below your tree line, your lot line. Your lot's higher elevation than the lot line, correct?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so you'd be looking down.
But.
It's not going to be above.
Right, all the problem is. That's one of the concerns I have is access. Number one, you have to do research and find that out for sure. Because, um, I was like, we've got. Obviously, number two is, obviously, a town is sure there are three intersections right there. I can't believe they didn't let that happen. I believe that that access, that property, Bill Reisner's all from Noble Street at the time. I can probably look at the old plans back in the day. It must have happened in the bottom.
Yeah, we'll look into the Santander issue. In regards to our traffic study, it was favorable for the access off of Washington Street. So self-storage, I mean, not a lot of people are accessing, but yeah.
It's a time, Santander couldn't access Route 20, but now, and what's going on in traffic history?
Either way, if people are favorable to access off Washington, right? Because it wouldn't be off your street.
Yeah, I don't know what she asked, if Washington would be a better access. Very, very good topic, flow of self-storage. Understand, but there'd just be that intersection, just over that.
We'll call the meeting back.
Thanks.
Both of those buildings are slabs, right?
Say that again, sir.
Slab foundation.
Uh, yes.
Has anybody on the board, anybody else in the audience have any questions? Samara, do you have any questions?
This is Ryan. Can you hear me? This is Ryan with National Grid.
Okay.
I just wanted to say, we just received the plans, the plan set. So we haven't had a chance to fully review them and get our comments back to the applicant.
It's out for peer review now anyway, so they're not going to get a decision tonight.
Pardon me?
It's out for peer review now. They're not going to get a decision tonight. This meeting will be continued, so you'll have time to review.
Okay. Sounds good.
Any other questions?
No.
No.
Rokesh?
I have a few questions. I think maybe I can start with the parking spaces. So I think, so from an industrial zoning perspective, we, Adam, you can correct me here. We require a space for 2,000 square feet, right?
I'll have to go back and look at the specifics. It's.
Somewhere around that.
Usually one per employee, then.
Okay.
Somebody for customers.
Because I think if it's going just with the square footage in the bylaws, then, you know, I mean, we have 30... I think you're looking at 34 spaces, but we might need, if it's 70,000, then we might need more. If it's 140,000, we might need more as well.
140,000 divided by 20, 70. How many do they have?
They have 34.
I'll have to double that.
But that's why I'm not sure what the requirement is.
You don't mind?
The other thing is, so just, I think for the, for Casey and Russell here, the two lots are the, the two buildings are these two separate units? Are they combined as one, I'm assuming they're combined as one property, right?
Yeah, on one property, yep.
Yeah, but it's two different buildings, right?
Two different buildings.
Two separate buildings, I think. Are they two separate buildings?
Correct, yep.
Are they both two-story and one one-story and one two-story?
They're both two-story.
And then, so would the ADA parking spaces, would there be a requirement to have ADA spaces on each side of these buildings? So one, you know, a couple of spots on one building and then another couple of spots on the other side?
So for the ADA, we've placed it near the northern building, the rectangular, because people would be walking in. There's an office there. For the other building, it's drive-up stalls. So realistically, they're driving up to their stall, getting out and accessing it, so.
Okay. Then the, and I know National Grid is reviewing this as well. So there is an easement in between these two buildings, right? So now is there a transfer? Is there any requirements or restrictions for you to access the easement?
Yeah, we can't propose like any physical structures. We're only proposing our driveway across it so we can basically get access. But yeah, I believe there are height clearance restrictions as well. So we'll be going through that detailed review with National Grid.
Okay. And then the, I know, so the, I think fire, sewer, and water have provided their feedback. I think we can talk about that in a second, but. On the, yes, so the, from the description here, there is, I mentioned about larger facility, larger storage facility that requires full utility. So which, where would those come in? Would those be on the left one or the right? Where would those storage units come in? So there are larger facilities that are, that require full utilities, while smaller facilities would only require electrical service?
So both of the facilities will get electrical service. The rectangular building will not have a bathroom within it, so it won't have water, domestic water or sewer connected. It will have fire line connected because it will be sprinkled. The square building on the north side will have the full gamut of utilities because it does have that office space.
Okay.
You all set, Rokesh?
Yeah.
Yeah, as the gentleman spoke earlier about the groundwater, I remember that, I'm not sure what it was, but you should check with building and code because when we approved that Santander site, there was something with the way they cut the clay out for the Worcester landfill that they went, I think, into groundwater or below ground. There was something about it, so, and that they were possibly going to have to raise it. I don't recall anything with Santander or an exit for anybody else having to go through there. I do know that we, I think, pushed them to go off Millbury Street because we didn't want them to go in right there at the intersection with the road, where Millbury Street already came up.
You had another comment, sir? Don't walk up, just speak loudly. I'm not going to make you walk up.
I think I was a little confused was, I think we got east-west, north and south wrong. You're on the west side of Santander. Correct?
Uh.
Correct.
Somewhat, yeah. Yeah, I would say southwest, but yeah, yep.
Right, I assume, I guess you guys will address this later on, you're pumping super up the line?
Yep, exactly.
Anything else, Ryan? Todd?
Yeah, with respect to, I apologize if this was covered in your traffic report. I don't recall seeing it. Did your traffic engineer do a crash analysis? I know that the intersection of Washington and Millbury is a high-crash area within the town. And I know that the police chief has voiced concerns previously about crashes in this area with Mass DOT. And your proposed driveway is fairly close to that intersection?
Yep. So they did do a crash rate analysis. And there was a road safety audit that was performed in 2021 that recommended installing advanced signage for the signal along the North Brown Approach, and additionally, some pavement marking. So those are, you know, relatively simple implementations that we, I think, can make and coordinate with Mastah to make that intersection a bit safer. So yes, they did do that analysis, and it should be detailed in the traffic study.
One other question. Would you be amenable to a right turn only out of that driveway? Because one of the high crashes in that area are people trying to, you know, come out of the gas station and go left towards the pike. So this would be a lot safer.
Yeah, we have discussed that. If, you know, that's the town's position and Mastah as well, I think we would be amenable to doing that.
I believe the fitness gym across the street has a right turn only.
Yes, they do.
Right.
Yeah. Yep. So that is something you're amenable to?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I got a few questions on Sheet C 3.0, where it's your overall erosion and sediment control. On the portion of the land that abuts Old Common Road, I'm assuming it's above on the page. It's above the wetlands down on the right-hand corner. You have no silt fence there and your grave slopes down there the whole way.
Um, are you talking directly adjacent to Old Common? We, so we have, uh, a diversion ditch that's planned to pick up, um, any sediment-laden water. And then, uh, that would be piped to the sediment trap. And then below that sediment trap, we have, uh, silt fence, which, uh.
Right, but any, any work to the, um, the north, northeast portion of that, any work there while you're digging in your trench or whatever, you can have runoff if you have a rainstorm, it's gonna run right down on Old Common Road. You need a silt fence all the way up Old Common Road.
Okay, yeah, we can, we can add silt fence and lining Old Common.
Um. On, uh, your sheet C three point six, the erosion control, sediment control details, you have silt fence but no wattles. Or hay bales in your detail.
Cut, we will add those in.
Okay, this is kind of picking you, but your, um, your bollards for your handicap signs, steel pole, fill with concrete, painted yellow, is that galvanized and non-galvanized?
It would be galvanized.
But you're gonna have a hard time getting paint to stick to it. If it's not prepped properly, I would suggest you can do what you want, but you have plastic things that go over it and it's covered. And then up above that on the sidewalk detail, you call for eight-inch dense blended gravel? What is dense blended gravel? I've never heard that term.
Uh, I mean, we can, we can add a specific Mastah specification on the gravel to.
And then on your, uh, C five point O, the way it looks to me that you have your drainage outlets headed toward Washington Street. You can't exit your water onto Washington Street.
Yep, we'll, um, add further detail. It, there should be a defined channel that's going towards the wetlands. Everything is going, um, in existing conditions. All the off-site water is draining towards the wetlands, so we'll make sure we add sufficient detail so it depicts that.
Your ejection station on the front side of the square building for your sewer?
Mm-hmm.
You have a line drawn up, and I, I understand it's a sewer force main, but you don't really show what you tie into. It just ends. There's no, you have no line drawn on the plan at all for the existing sewer.
Yeah, we have, um, we've obtained, uh, asphalt from the sand tender, so we'll, we'll get the additional information for the tie-in.
Cause it looks like you're, you're supposed to tie into a Y on that sewer main, I'm not sure.
There's an existing cap in the utility easement.
Yeah, a cap is either on a Y or a T.
So we'll be replacing it with a manhole and tying in to the cap there.
So the pipe just comes down and dead ends are capped, that's it? So you're gonna put a manhole there?
Yes.
You need to show that, you're gonna show that. I think that's all I have. Let me just double check. On your, uh, proposed lighting, did you do, have a light study done?
Yeah, yep, we have a photometric.
Cause you can't get any, none can go on the road, either road, none can, uh, perforate somebody else's property. Like the gentleman is abutting the property, he doesn't want, he doesn't want to see your lights. I know you're low, but still, if they're not put it properly, they will. So I would, if you have a lighting study, I would suggest you present that. And the only other comment I had, if I read it right from the fire department, they suggested you make your entrance in and off of Old Common Road. You have room to do it.
Yeah, we're, we're coordinating with them, um, so we'll have, you know, further, uh, I guess answers at the, the next meeting, uh, if that's something we implement. But preferably, we'd, um, like to keep it off of Washington. Maybe we add an additional entrance off of Old Common, but, um, just for site access, we would like to have our primary entrance off of Washington.
Well, if you put it off of Old Common Road, it alleviates a lot of traffic problems for you. Because he asked if you do a right turn only, I'm gonna ask you to put in a right-hand lane coming, coming towards, uh, Worcester on Route 20. Right turn only on that right-hand lane. That means you're gonna have to widen the road with Mastah permission and have a right turn. That way the people are off the road and out of the, cause that light backs right up 20 in both directions, depending on the time of day. So if you had a right lane to the right, like they did down on, um, the next industrial park down there on the left of their building now, uh, they had a right lane built for a right-hand turn to get everybody off, off of Route 20, so they didn't hold up 20. That would be a suggestion I'd make.
Yeah, appreciate the comment.
Another question?
Same, same as well as I would have is coming westbound on Route 20. You'd be able to take a left turn across eastbound traffic, get into that piece of property. Come up over a hill or set lights. I believe, you know, we know the factors that.
That's. That's another reason to come down and take a left on Old Common Road instead of being mid on that slope. It's, it is a high crash area, I mean.
It's a right in, right out.
What's that?
If it's gonna come in off of Washington, it should be a right in and a right out only. So no one can make that left turn. And you can design your, your driveway to not allow a left turn unless they really do a funky movement.
So my question would be, if I was a prospective customer, how do I turn around if I'm heading west on 20? There's no jug handle, do you get all the way down to Ronnie's? Ask Ronnie's. You can't make U-turns with the lights. That would be my, my question.
I believe the way it is now, if somebody's going to that gym and they're going east on Washington, they're, they're going up, they can't make a left now because I believe it's a double.
No, they have to go up and make a left.
They can left at the intersection and then they make a left into the driveway.
They can only get in going, going eastbound and then exit again going eastbound. Right or right?
Right, but I mean, if somebody's coming westbound on Route 20, like the gentleman behind you said, they're gonna make a left-hand turn. It's not illegal.
Well, you, you can, you can design the driveway so that, again, it's, it's a splitter island. So it's, it's difficult for them to make that movement around and then to come in if they're gonna make a left turn from Washington. And it's all about how they have to design the driveway coming in.
Ever hear the expression? About how much you improve something, they always come up with a better idea. I guarantee you someone run over that island, just like over at, uh, O'Reilly's. They're not supposed to go out onto the side street, they go on the side street anyway.
No matter what we do, somebody's gonna do something.
Yep, but that's why I would suggest the, the entrance and exit right on, uh, Old Common Road alleviates all that. And it keeps the intersections the same without adding another traffic. That way they can come down 20, take a left on Old Common, cause you can, and up Route 20 heading east, take a right on Old Common Road. And your, your driveway would be, um, outside of the wetland area. That's all I have.
John, I have a couple more thoughts, I think, on the fire, uh, fire department's comments. I think it'll be important to, to look at the hydrants. You know, they're requiring you to put two hydrants, I think that's, that's important.
Yeah, we've been coordinating with them and they've provided a few locations that they ideally like to see those, so we'll implement them in.
And then, um, I think going back to that sprinkler system as well, um, I think that's something to look at. And then, um, you know, I think there were other comments from sewer? I don't know if you had a chance to look at that, sewer and water? I think they had comments as well.
Yes, they provided comments and we've started addressing them as well.
Ron?
John, they, they may already know, you might have mentioned it, but on the lighting, with respect to your lighting diagram, it has to be zero foot candles at the property line all the way around.
Yep, yeah, we'll, we'll, um, do a detailed presentation on the next meeting. Uh, but yeah, we've designed it within code and not, um, spreading light across property lines or into the right-of-way.
Anyone else? Anyone else in the audience have any questions? May I have a motion to continue to our next meeting?
I'll make the.
Make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Smara?
Hi.
Rakesh?
Hi.
Ron?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
myself, John Reagan, aye, as a vote. We'll see you at the next meeting if the hearing gets in on time. Uh, next up on the, uh, agenda tonight is applicant Eastland Partners requesting a site plan approval under section three point two point six point O of the Auburn zoning bylaw for warehouse distribution facility at one ninety Washington Street, Lot One, Auburn Mass, oh one five oh one, map thirty-four, parcel four.
Motion open.
Can I ma, can I make a motion open?
Second.
Still setting up. Have a motion to open the hearing?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Can you call your name, Todd?
Aye.
Yourself, John Reagan, aye.
Adam wants to get out of here.
The meeting is now open.
Good evening. For the record, Travis Brown in Turning Point Engineering, uh, here representing the applicant Eastland Partners is Chris Horn. This is, uh, Lot One of the Auburn Commerce Park subdivision, um, that you folks are probably well aware of now. We've, uh, permitted, uh, the other two sites. One of them is, uh, built as of this time. So this is Lot One, so this is the lot that fronts out on Route 20, um, that you probably drive by. Just for reference on the plan, as it may have been a little while, so on the bottom of the page is, uh, Route 20. We have the access to the subdivision, which is here. That road heads down to the cul-de-sac back in this location, if you remember from the definitive subdivision that was approved. Uh, we provided this, um, emergency access that came up through Lot One. Um, we're maintaining that, that'll provide access to fire department, a loop around, um, the entirety of, uh, the property. So the applicant is proposing a one hundred and two thousand square foot building, um, warehouse distribution facility. Uh, there's no known tenant at the time, so this is speculative. Um, so we've done a lot of, uh, work with the applicant to come up with a, a plan for this property that includes, um, some potential office space at either end of the building. Um, parking will be provided here and also at the other end of the building. This will have twenty-six loading docks in this location on the back, um, of the building. Uh, the access to this property, um, would be off of that subdivision road. So as you come into the subdivision to the left, you would access into, uh, this lot. You would come up, trucks would come in here, maneuver back into those loading docks, uh, load and unload materials, and then exit in the same, uh, location. Um, if you were an employee here, you would come in to this parking lot here presumably and or into this end of the building. This will be, uh, on public sewer and water. Um, if you remember, the sewer was brought from a pump station here. We provided gravity up that emergency access road with a manhole. That's the manhole that will tie in, so that sewer will flow down there into that existing pump chamber. Um, there'll be, uh, public water as well. Um, we have received comments from the fire department, um, in a meeting, follow-up meeting with them. They have requested that we move the sprinkler, sprinkler room in the building, which was in the middle of the building. They've requested a location at this corner. Um, they've also, uh, requested three hydrant locations, which will be shown on the revised plan. So in this location, in the back, and then a third hydrant here. That loop for the subdivision, that water line loop will be connected, will be looped through this property. Uh, we have received comment, like I said, from the fire department, from the sewer department, um, also from Graves Engineering. Uh, we're at the point where we've addressed all the comments. We would be filing a revised set of plans, so any input from tonight, we'll take that into consideration and catch that with a revised set of plans. So that's the site, happy to answer any questions about that. Um, we have prepared a rendering of the facility. I'm not sure how well you can see that here. But up here would be Route 20, so that's Patrick Mazda across the street there. Here's the subdivision road coming down. So you have this access road that comes up into the property. This would be the rear of the building. Uh, Route 20 would be out on the front there. That's about it from site perspective. Happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody in the audience have any questions for this gentleman? Please come to the mic.
Sit there. Sit there, too. Sit there, too.
That's true.
And I said I was gonna stay quiet. Doreen Goodrich, five Lowell Winbrook Drive. Um, first of all, let me just say to the board, I appreciate your comments at the last hearing about your concerns for traffic and turning lanes, et cetera, because, um, living in that area of, of Route 20 specifically, this section, and seeing what, you know, what has happened already is concerning. So, um, I do have several questions and a couple of comments. Same comment as last time, the fear of the unknown. We don't know what building is going in here when we talked about the last trucking company. We were told that it was a five-day operation, that they would be Monday through Friday, three shifts a day, which is a lot. But you would have the break on weekends. There's constant truck traffic coming out of that new trucking company on Saturdays, sometimes on Sundays. So, um, if you don't mind flipping your page over, I have a question on the plan. And I do appreciate the comments at the last hearing because, you know, I apologize if I was wrong, but I thought you guys had said that you hadn't.
If I remember correctly, Doreen?
Yes.
The hours of operation was Monday through Friday till noon time on Saturday, nothing Saturday afternoon, Saturday night or Sunday. That, that's on the record here somewhere in a.
Okay, well, it's, it's more than that. So, um, so I guess, um, so I'll finish my comments first, um, the hours of operation. So I'm wondering if, um, the developer can let us know, and I'm sure anyone who's driven down Route 20 can see how much they've cleared for the proposed project with, um, Mast DOT under, um, Mast DEP for the additional turning truck lanes. So I'm wondering if we have a timeline on that, when, when, um, that project will be complete. One thing I hope not to see again is when they did the work on the road and made these temporary travel lanes. Anyone who lives in the area can tell you, they dug up the road, they put the, I don't know what you call it, I call them bumps all over. And for a period, period of time, there were no lines. You didn't know where you were supposed to be in the lane and it was a nightmare. It truly is. I, I encourage you to, to just spend a little time on, on that part of Auburn. But, um, my question on this specific plan, since we don't know what type of operation going in there is, in the driveway, how many tractor trailers can be in queue before this? You're, you're telling me that they're accessing Commerce Road, right? How many tractor trailers can be in queue coming out of the development that would, um, block access to that road?
The main access into the site driveway?
How many, how, from, from Commerce Road? Can be in? No, I'm talking about in queue on Commerce Drive. Yep.
Two trucks before you're blocking access?
Two trucks, yeah, so, you know, I mean, you know, sometimes there can be four or five trucks. So what happens when you have other trucks coming off of Route 20 and can't get in there? Because you have, if you can only have two trucks in queue, yet you have, you could potentially have four or five in the morning. And again, I, I urge you to visit the site and see it. You know, you can have four or five tractor trailers in queue trying to pull out of the site in the morning. And, um, you know, traffic in and out could, could potentially be a nightmare.
What is the distance from Route 20 to that access road to the building? Said you have room for two queue, two in a queue. Said you have room for two, two in a queue.
You're talking probably 170 feet.
170?
So 53-foot trailers and the truck?
Well, the longest, the longest trailer truck can get out in a road is 75 feet, so they're just making it with two.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm a family of truck drivers.
So, I'm sorry, continue, Doreen.
So, so that's one of my, I mean, overall, this, this project has had, when we've moved forward, a lot of unknowns. And I'll, you know, I'll, I'll ask the developer again, you know, it still hasn't been addressed. It doesn't affect me, but, you know, I looked at the plans for the MAS DEP project there, where you're doing the turning lanes, and it says on the thing, apparent encroachment. And I know that there was discussion at the very first Board of Selectment meeting about, you know, reassuring those neighbors that they were going to be okay, and nothing has happened with that either. So I just feel that this project is moving quickly, moving large, before we know when Route 20 is gonna be complete, what type of businesses are gonna be in there. I mean, I'm not a NIMBY, I know it's gonna happen. I just want the safest thing to happen. I see what's happening on Route 20, and it, and it's frightening. And it, and, and wait until the summer hits, when, when the Mas Pike, as we all know, backs up, and everyone gets off on Route 20. It's, it's a nightmare, and, 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 and not all of you, but many of you know, my heart is here in Auburn. I don't just care about myself, I care about the entire town, and this, this project is concerning me right now.
I understand.
Thank you. So if you can allay some of our fears, um, especially with traffic, safety, and the, you know, property that you cleared. I, I still don't see turning lanes, you know, right there. I, it drops down, what, about 30 feet? How you'll do turn, turning lanes? I still don't understand, um, or I can't envision what these turning lanes will be. And maybe once they're complete, you know, we can all feel better that there's some safety, um, measures in place. But, um, right now, that section of Route 20 is not safe. And if you have vehicles coming, I don't know my, my directions, from the west up over that hill, right as you hit this, that, that section of property, the car dealership in this, if there's anyone stopped there, you're gonna have another accident. And the chief has also expressed his concerns about safety in that area. So, um, I'd like a lot more information, please. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else in the audience have any questions? Please, please do.
Barbara Klosky, I'm a Windbrook resident, and, um, the recent clearing of that Lot 50 for supposedly the expansion of the road, um, it took everybody by surprise. I mean, nobody knew what was gonna happen. They just went in there and bulldozed the whole forest. We now have direct lighting from the Honda dealership pouring down on the homes along there. Um, we're just wondering what's gonna be done about this in the future, now that they've destroyed all that trees. So we have a lot of residents there now that, you know, the lights from the Honda deal are completely in our windows. And there's very few trees left there, so come summer, you know, there's still gonna be a lot of light coming down.
If, if there's lighting?
And we just wondered why we weren't notified they were gonna go into the 50, in 50 lot and do the work. As in a butter, we should have been notified about this.
If you have light, uh, pollution coming from Honda, that means their lighting isn't staying with inside their lot. That's something you have to talk to the building commissioner about. We have no control over that, if I'm not mistaken, right? Caleb, Caleb can make a decision on that. They get them to cut the lighting back so it stays on their property. So when you put the shade up at night, take a look out the window, you're not getting, being beamed on.
Well, a- and again, when they widen the road, I, I would assume they're gonna put streetlights and more lighting on the road, which is now, like I said, it's completely barren of trees.
Well, as far as the clearing, I believe they had permission to do that, right?
It would have led to conservation.
Conservation Commission had approved that. We don't approve clearing conservation.
There should, what, there was no public notice it was gonna happen? And as in a butter, Eastland, it's always saying they wanna be our good neighbors. They didn't have the decency to notify us they were gonna be in there taking all the trees out. I mean, as in a butter, shouldn't we have been notified this was gonna happen?
Okay, conservation, I don't know what conservation did, or did not do.
Go ahead.
Just so we're dealing in facts, yes, we have a permitted project on 50 for the tree clearing work that's associated with the road widening of Route 20, uh, that DOT is looking at a final design now. There were a butter, a butter notifications during that process, as typical with the notice of intent.
Never received it.
She apparently didn't get one. Do you have a, did you send those certified mail or registered mail?
Provide those to the Conservation Commission. They verify that, you know, everybody's been notified before they'll open the hearings.
Could you do me a favor and show her the fact that you sent her one? And stay in communication with her so she's not...
I'm the president, also the president of the corporation, so I receive all notices or anything like this, and I work in the office. And we, to my knowledge, did nothing came in. I do the mail every day.
That, I don't know one way or the other, but that's done by the Conservation Commission, not the planning board, that permission.
Just also for the record, we are not filing on that lot. This application tonight has nothing to do with that lot whatsoever.
It's for the road widening, correct?
For the road widening and work on an adjacent lot, correct?
She used it as a storage lot, basically, for materials and stuff.
It'll be a staging area for that road widening work, but it has nothing to do with the application that we're...
Right, I, I understand that.
It just, the road widening does affect that lot, that's all, you know, even...
Well, that's, that's the whole point of that road widening, so they have a right turn lane for the trucks to go in and out of there, so they're not holding up traffic on Route 20. If there's a red light, they can go to the right and get off the high, get off Route 20. That was the whole point of that road widening. So if we didn't do that, and they stopped at the light, both of you, and I'm not criticizing you because I understand your concerns, you be in here saying, "Well, they didn't do anything. We got traffic backed up in front of our house all the time with trailer trucks." Because they didn't put a right turning lane in. That's what that whole lane is for, is to avoid that.
Well, we understood...
Look out your window out of your trailer park, you don't see a lot of trailer trucks waiting to get into Ross Express for this building. That was the whole point of the turning lane.
I understand that. We understand there's gonna, that things were gonna happen. We were just hoping to be kept in the loop, and we weren't blindsided by taking down the whole forest. That's all.
I understand. Maybe they need to do a better job of communication. Go ahead, Doreen. Just speak loudly. They're not gonna make you walk up.
I'm just a follow-up on what you said. Absolutely, the turn lanes will be appreciated. But, you know, it's the unknown of where we are in the process. Is another large warehouse going to be approved before MAS DOT finishes their review and we get the turn lanes in? And, and again, you know, as you said, I'm, I'm no tenant, you know, you know, and that's it. But they are the unknown, and we know...
We didn't hear.
So we know that, you know, MAS DOT may take some time to do this. We've got, I assume you're, you know, they have the easement through National Grid. Is that going to need another review, um, for the turning lanes? This all takes time, and in the meantime, we're, we're, we're filling it with tenants before we address the safety personnel.
Well, we don't have any tenants now, but I don't know when they're gonna come in, but I'll be bringing that up if you hang around.
I'm hanging around.
Anybody else have any questions? One thing I can request from the, the developers, please be more communicative. Even if you go knock on doors and tell people what's going on, it'll make them a lot happier, you know, relieve people coming up to the town.
And also, Mr. Chairman, we don't receive individual notices, even the people who are, are butters right there. That Windbrook Acres is one address?
Correct.
And so one notice goes to the office.
Well, if the notice goes to the office, it's up to the office to notify you.
And she has, and she has, and that's why I said we didn't know about the other. But I just, just the board numbers know where, I'm just making you aware that, that, you know, because it's unique. Like, we, we don't all receive a butter notification. One, the butter notification goes to 120.
Yeah, because they own the land.
Because it's all one thing. Just, just, just the board numbers know it. We're not, you know, 100 homes aren't receiving a butter notification. One notice is...
That's by, that's by law, I mean, legally, you're not in a butter. You don't own the land, you only, you only own the trailer. Any other questions?
No.
Rakesh?
Can someone touch on two things? One, the, uh, I think, uh, the lady spoke about it, the, uh, encroachment of some of those trailers that was on your property. And I know it went back and forth since you've owned it and we're looking at the development, but I know the last thing that I remember was that Eastland was gonna settle or do something with the people, so they would not have to worry about that and would not have to think of their land being encro, that they were encroaching. You were gonna either donate that land or to each individual party that needed it, or to the whole trailer park, so there was not now an encroachment. Someone answer that, Chris?
That was a recollection. So, yeah, once the development of that property comes, that will be addressed. The application tonight isn't for that property. That is abutting the condo.
I think we have the best intentions to address that.
I got one comment for best intentions. Put it in writing. Put it in writing to the trailer park, that you're going to gift them the land once you get done. That way, everybody's at ease down there. It's all it takes is one letter.
We've had several meetings with them. I mean, initially, before we did anything, we started with them. Both of these ladies have my cell phone numbers. That's true. You know, my, my emails, they're welcome to call me anytime. I think they both know that. I mean, we can be good neighbors.
And I just touched on that here. Basically, all the communication about the encroachments stopped after we refused to let Eastland tie into our civil rights. So there's been no more talk about it since then, and it just stands hanging up there at the end.
I thought that even after that, that I had heard that you were gonna settle it up and donate that land in some form or fashion.
Because it's not useful to you. It's not a lot of land.
No, it's not.
Really not. It's a little border on the edge, edge of your property.
And they probably have been using it for well over 20 years and every, you know, you know, so...
The only problem with that is if you own the trail and it's encroaching, you do not own the land.
We do, we do. We're a co, we all own the land.
You all own the land?
We all own the land. We're, we're, the only one in town, we're, we're all owners. It's a corporation, resident-owned corporation.
So it's like a condo complex, you own the land?
We all own.
So if there's any scuttlebutt about this between them not wanting to give you the land, you ever heard of adverse possession?
Oh, yeah.
You can take it by adverse possession, but you gotta be open and hostile about it. You gotta do all the communications. Gotta talk to the lawyers, all that stuff.
We wanted to try to avoid that and do it in a peaceful way, and I thought that you guys had agreed to do that.
Go ahead, Doreen.
And I think one more is going to go to tonight's here, and, um, because I'll bring it back to this development here. If anyone knows me, it's not, I'm not a NIMBY. I know that this project is going to happen. I served on the Board of Selectmen for 12 years, but then it's on each member. I just wanna make sure that it's the best thing of, of all the residents of Auburn, the people coming from Old Common Road and Milbury Street, and, you know, and everything else, and the people who live on east of us. This is, this is not personal because, um, because number one, I'm a resident at Windbrook Acres, and because there's that, that encroachment. My voice has been heard at more planning board meetings, selectmen meetings, zoning board locations, because I truly care. And, and there's some legitimate concern states and legitimate safety issues that everyone can work out. And I, and I appreciate the dialogue.
Okay.
John?
Go ahead, Ron.
Can, you just described to me from where Windbrook Acres is, and you're heading south, southwest, up Route 20. You clear it up to like the line there, and it's cleared maybe up 50, 75 feet off the road. And then you come up, and then you get to the high tensions, and then right beyond the high tensions, before Commerce, there's a definite area of wetlands that you can see. Now, I'm just curious, for my, where are the, how are those lanes gonna be? You're gonna build actually another road off the side of the road? You're gonna have to build it up, and you're gonna, can you just explain that a little bit? Even if it's not exactly part of your application?
Yes, so that road, um, will be widened to accommodate that right turn deceleration lane into Commerce Drive.
Into Commerce.
Which the temporary work is done now. It's in the final stages of design from DOT. They're reviewing it. So the permanent work is still yet to be done. But that will be widened. There'll be a combination of a retaining wall where that crossing is that you mentioned just before the high tension line. Uh, there's a couple of head walls there, so a combination of a retaining wall and a slope going down to meet that existing grade. So that's what will happen.
I know there were some wetlands in there. You'll go to the conservation and I'm sure, I see bail stuff all over, so...
That, yeah, so that work for that widening has been approved by conservation, that work down to the wetland line. That's correct.
Thank you.
Any else, Ron?
No.
Yeah, I just got a couple of questions. Do you know the, the status or the timeline on MAS DOT's final approval of the changes on Route 20?
Never, never put a timeline on somebody else, but especially MAS DOT. But I know they're in the final stages of working out that work. I would anticipate sometime this spring.
Spring for approval?
Yeah.
And then you'll be constructing it over the summer?
Presumably over the summer into the fall.
And you guys are funding the construction?
Correct.
Okay. Couple of the questions based off of what Doreen said. Is there a possibility for you to move your driveway into this location further back from the intersection to prevent that potential queuing issue?
Move that driveway back?
The driveway in, from, the driveway into this site, uh, move it further down on Commerce in order to eliminate the queuing issue that, that Doreen pointed out is a potential?
Yeah, fortunately, that's not practical because Commerce Drive comes down the way the site is. I'm not sure how well you can see here, but the grade getting up to that pad level is just not practical for tractor trailer trucks and maneuverability.
Couple of the questions on, uh, C9. I assume the Fire Department reviewed the auto turn analysis. Are they comfortable with the, uh, the, the thought of their engines getting dead-ended in those two parking areas? Normally, when they come before us, they wanna avoid those types of situations where they're sort of dead-ended or need to back out.
Sure.
To exit.
So, um, they did review this. Like I said, we had a follow-up meeting with them. They were okay with, uh, the end on the Mas Pike side because they would have this turnaround, they would simply back down. They were okay with that. In this location, which you will see on the revised plans, we've actually provided a little bump out here. So when they come up into this, they'll be able to back out into this corner.
So they're gonna be able to do a K-turn, basically?
Right.
Okay.
Right. And they, yeah, they were, they were, um, accepting of that, that little turnaround. So that is a change that you would see on the revised plan.
Okay. The last thing is, uh, you know, future-looking to this, you built the sidewalk on Commerce Drive opposite where this property is located. There's no walkway from this area over to that sidewalk. Have you guys thought about putting in a walkway leading to that sidewalk?
Across the street?
Across Commerce, not across Washington. Yeah.
Across what?
Well, I mean, a walkway on the property line and then a crosswalk going across the street, across the sidewalk. And if there's one there, I, I apologize, I'm looking at a eight-and-a-half-by-11 plan, so...
Absolutely.
Yeah, so you're saying there's no connection from this?
Yeah, there's no pedestrian, exactly. There's no pedestrian connection over to that, over to that sidewalk that was put in. And when there is a pedestrian connection, assuming, you know, that you guys put one in, there should also be some handicap ramps put on that side of the sidewalk, so it's ADA compliant as well.
Yeah, that's something we can look at, having a connection from this facility to that existing walk.
And what's the timeline of this building relative, construction of this building relative to the improvements on Route 20 being completed?
Take that.
Take that.
Yeah, um, I think depending on when Mass DOT finishes its design, we'd like to start, you know, we'd like to gear up and charge on Route twenty as soon as we have it designed, you know, from that. And we don't really, we don't wanna just get it done. Um, and we'd like to start construction on this building, you know, as soon as we get approvals. Assuming we get approvals from you guys, you know. So sort of probably working at the same time. And I would say the DOT, uh, the Route twenty rebuild would be done well before we had already done the occupancy.
Okay, that was my next question. Thank you. Yeah, that's it.
I got a couple of questions, but one basic question. You don't know what's coming in here.
Pretendance, correct.
You have no idea.
Correct.
You have twenty-six loading docks, correct?
Correct.
If you can't sell it to a trucking company, how can you tell me how many parking spaces you can have for that building? When you don't know how many people are gonna be in there?
You're right, it's speculative at this point. If it changes and we need to come back personally.
I cannot approve anything on speculation. I have to have the facts. What's gonna go in there? Is it gonna be another trucking terminal like Ross Express down the, down the back? I mean, I have heard any complaints from the Prakatalk Hill with the backup alarms. But you may hear from, I don't know how far this a- actually is from the trailer park. I don't know how many feet that is.
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head, but it's, uh, I know we talked about it during the subdivision and during Ross Express specifically, but it's pretty far.
There's enough vegetation to kill the backup alarm noise, so you're not waking up at two o'clock in the morning because you're supposed to work, you know, seven to nine at night or whatever, and then you're in at two o'clock in the morning or.
Yeah, based on.
AM on a Sunday morning.
I mean, we're on Route twenty, right, with the traffic generated there and then tucked into the Mass Pike. My guess is these alarms and this truck traffic from this facility is not gonna drown out that existing noise.
The other concern I have is we don't know who's coming in there, we don't know what their hours or operation are. But I almost remember distinctly what the hours of Ross Express were supposed to be. That was promised to us, that's not the case. I'm pretty disappointed. It was supposed to be Monday through Friday, like seven or six in the morning till eleven at night. They were supposed to shut everything off, half a day on Saturday, and that was it. No Saturday afternoon, no Saturday night, no Sunday. And she's telling me you got traffic going in and out there on Sunday.
Yeah, I can't verify that, I've not been keeping up with their facility.
Like I say, I'd really say it, it's BS. That's BS. That's not what the people were promised, that's not what Ross Express promised.
We, we can look at that, we can work to do that. I mean, Steve Brown, Steve Brown is a stand-up guy and owns Ross for all of us, it really is, so. I'm happy to think about looking that, finding out, if I'm not standing, I might have to look into that, you know.
Please do.
I don't know what's really going on.
Cause it, to me, until that situation is resolved, I don't, I mean, I'm not the only one voting here. But personally, I don't think I could vote to approve this, even if you met all the criteria, if that problem is not resolved. Just saying.
Yeah, but the.
I mean, just to be fair to the neighbors. I mean, you're not responsible for Honda across the street or anything like that. One last time, Doreen.
It's about this, and I'm gonna be honest with you, it's not, it's not like heavy constant traffic.
Doesn't matter.
I'm just saying, you know, I, I, I don't wanna mislead the board. You know, it's not, it's not like, you know, seven o'clock in the morning when you're all heading to the Mass Pike and one forty-six. You know, but there is traffic and I, I said, you know, I'm from a family of truck drivers. Sometimes they have to come in and out at different hours, but we also need to respect what was, what was promised.
Absolutely.
I do not wanna mislead this board, not like seven AM traffic that late.
To me, it doesn't matter if it's fifteen trucks on a Sunday morning or one. There wasn't supposed to be any. Or after nine o'clock or five o'clock on a Saturday, I don't remember the exact times.
Adam, do you have the specific?
I'd have to look it up. I'll get up and I'll.
Go ahead.
Chris, does Ross own that lot? So they're, they're a private entity now, they own the lot. So it's, they would have to commit to the, uh, to the conditions that we set when they, uh.
And what, what they told us at the time and what we conveyed to the board.
They were here and said it themselves.
We were not misleading if they're doing something that we were not aware of during permitting and that we said.
I believe Ross Express was here and that those are the hours they sat. If they're not living up to the hours.
We weren't here for Ross, I mean, that was, they bought the lot.
Yeah.
Off the subdivision, if they're building, if they're visiting.
Right. I understand where you're coming from. Any other questions? May I have a motion to continue this to our next meeting if they get all the reviews done?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 So, John, you and I, is a vote. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for your time.
Next on the list is applicant. Mass Ten Enterprises LLC requesting special permit under section three point two point five point three of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a drive-through restaurant at eight twenty-four Southbridge Street, Auburn, Mass. Oh, one, five, oh, one, map sixty-six parcel one forty-eight. Continued from our one twenty-four, twenty, twenty-three meeting. Is there anyone here representing, uh, Mass Ten Enterprises? Being done, may I have a motion to continue that?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favors, Laura?
Aye.
Laura Cash?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
So, John, you as an I, it's continued, it is a vote. Uh, applicant Nordic Industrial Properties requesting site plan approval under nine point four of the Auburn zoning bylaw. In addition to an existing structure and new freestanding structure for commercial slash industrial use at twelve fourteen Sword Street, Auburn. Oh, one, five, oh, one, map eleven parcels thirteen and one forty-four. This has been continued also from our one twenty-four, twenty-three meeting. Is there anyone here representing Nordic Industrial Properties?
Yes, good evening. Uh, I'm Ron Mendez from Graves Engineering, uh, speaking on behalf of Nordic Industrial Properties, uh, for the proposed project at twelve fourteen Sword Street. Our first meeting was sometime in December, so if I may recap a bit of it. The pro- I mean, excuse me, the property is currently developed with, uh, multiple, uh, buildings, primarily used for industrial and commercial purposes. There is an existing residence and a detached garage on the property, as well as, um, paved parking areas throughout the property. The project proposes to, uh, demolish the residence and the detached garage and construct a sixty-foot by sixty-foot single-story building, um, as well as construct a sixty-foot by one-hundred-foot addition. As part of the project, also, they want to expand existing paved park, the existing parking areas and increase the number of parking spaces from seventy to eighty-five in order to comply with the parking requirements. The project also proposes to, um, install stormwater mitigation features, such as a bio-retention area and underground filtration system, and as well as some associated piping. Due to the amount of disturbance, we have applied for a major land disturbance permit. And there is an existing intermittent, uh, stream on the property towards the westerly property line, um, as well as wetlands, and we are in the process with the Conservation Commission. We have also received, uh, peer review comments. At this point, we're up to, uh, the second peer review letter. The first one obviously focused on the suggested, um, recommendations or revisions. The second letter has pretty much, uh, summarized that most of the, or that the revisions were acknowledged, uh, I guess satisfactory. And I believe that might be the overall scope of the project. If there are any questions that I may answer, uh, please let me know.
Anybody in the audience have any questions? No. Smara, do you have any questions?
No.
Laura Cash, you have any questions? Ron?
You're not gonna do any disturbing near the brook. The brook is on the southwest boundary, right? Runs along the back part of the property.
Along the western side of the property.
Colonial and that, yeah.
We would be doing work within the buffer area. But that's something that we're working with the Conservation Commission at this point.
I'm, I'm all set.
Todd?
No.
Okay, I just got a quick question, just page it, whip us through this real quick. C one oh five. You have two sewer services coming out of the same building. I don't understand why.
Let me.
Gotta be a reason, but.
Okay. Oh, you mean the rear building?
The rear building, yes.
Yes, in that particular case, um, it's because one would be for, uh, the, I guess, regular sanitary sewer services. And the other one is because, um, that one actually makes a connection to the proposed overhead doors on the other side of the building. Um, so in this case, since we're trying to install an oil water separator.
Okay.
That's the, that would be the second connection.
The, um, the other thing I just noticed is your sewer service, your six-inch sewer service, it looks to me like it says six-inch sewer service invert four ninety-two at building. Then it says eight-inch PVC seventeen feet at three percent. So I don't know if that's an eight-inch service or a six-inch service, or it's because I'm looking at an eleven by fourteen plan.
You said seventeen feet at the percent.
As well.
Um, maybe mistaken, but I believe my chute says, well, I guess the version that I have says six inches, but I could.
Both say six, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Um, you have to wait for conservation, right?
That's a standard condition in all town. Pools of metal, so.
The, um, the detail for granite curving on C five oh one. I believe the standard now is that you have concrete underneath in front and in back of the curving. So if it does get hit by a plow, it doesn't wanna lean over, it can't. It's got support on both sides. I've seen that on all the granite curving details in town now. In the state.
Okay, let me look into it then.
Okay, yeah, okay, that's your walk away. On your ballots, I would recommend the same if it's gonna be galvanized, to put the plastic over it. Cause I don't care what paint or what epoxy manufacturer's gonna tell you. I'll go up to when it's been prepared properly, take a quarter and scrape it off in two days. Just does not last.
I understand, I hope so.
I fight about it on all my jobs all the time. I'm not picking on you, just telling you what it's like.
No problem.
I don't see any dropping out of me, anybody else see any dropping out of them?
John, I.
Nope.
I have a, so just looking at the, um.
Comments?
The comments. There are a few things that, you know, um, so for example, the, um, comment number six, uh, the parking area in the front of the concrete block warehouse does not adhere to our bylaws. Um, looks like Graves wanted to keep it as the existing non-conforming parking.
Yes, that is an existing parking area. Um, at this time, we haven't, we don't propose to alter that parking area except for re-striping the, and formalizing the parking spaces there. Not increasing again the amount of pavement or reducing.
Does anyone on the board have an objection to making a motion to approve plan? As long as they meet the requirements of the Conservation Commission?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second first.
Okay. Now I should get that.
Can I just ask one other question?
Sure.
Going back to comment number ten, um, your dumpster's not screened. Is there a reason why you're not screening it, other than it's sitting behind the building?
To my knowledge, that's really it at this point, um, you go, I respectfully, I mean, you go there now and the dumpster's there, I guess. Uh, as to why and stuff like that, it's like that, I don't know. Uh, but we haven't considered adding a screen to it.
So can I ask a question on that, uh, maybe for Adam? If the, you know, so if the proposal does not, you know, does not adhere to the bylaws, and if we, if the planning board accepts it, is there an exception? Do we, are we granting an exception?
Any special?
Yeah, that's what we're.
No, the, the planning board can waive that. So you can have a permit, or pass child approval if they have lost parking. If you accept, if you approve the plan. They don't need any special.
Thank you.
So is there an objection to screening it?
Uh, off the top of my head, I would not know, but maybe I should defer.
No, there is no objection to screening.
Until I probably, seven or eight months of the year, seven months anyways, it's not visible even from the homes in the distance because the lid on the tree.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure it's not visible from the homes a hundred percent of the time. Like the bylaw requires.
Anybody else? I have one more question. Forgive me if, um, if I don't see it. Snow storage?
I believe snow storage should be, uh, on page, uh, C one oh three, let me.
One oh three.
Confirm that before I start spurring off any nonsense.
Yeah, it's right there, it's one oh three.
Yeah, so it should be on sheet C one oh three. Um, so for instance, there are some spots, um, namely at the, towards the southeastern corner.
I see, is that gonna be big enough for that, all your parking lots that dump the snow there? Are you gonna haul the stuff off-site if you have to?
We're gonna have to consider hauling it.
Okay. Anybody have a, an objection to making the exception for the parking spaces?
Can you close the hearing first?
I won't, right, I want to ask for some objections. Any objections?
No.
Before I do that. May I have a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favors, Smara?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
So, John, you as an I, it is a vote. Meeting is now, may I have a motion to approve said plan allowing them to make the modification on the parking? And as long as they meet the, um, Conservation Commission.
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Can I make a friendly amendment? That they're gonna screen the dumpster?
Yes.
Thank you.
Include that amendment to screen the dumpster.
Mm-hmm.
Aye.
Laura Cash?
Aye.
Aye.
So, John, you as an I, it is a vote. You all set?
All right, thank you kindly for your time.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is applicant Robert Lemansky for GL McKinstry Trust for a definitive subdivision plan for a two-lot, single-family home development with a site improvements on property located at Claire Drive in Linda Ave, Auburn, Mass, oh, one, five, oh, one. This has been continued from our one twenty-four, twenty twenty-three meeting. Is there anyone here representing Mr. Lemansky? There being none, may I have a motion to continue this hearing?
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
How long do we keep continuing this? I mean, this is.
I've spoken to, you know, a couple of times. They're looking to go forward, they are waiting, last heard from comment from DEW on land disturbance. They want to incorporate that into the plans we're bringing to planning board. There's been some back and forth, I don't know what that status is. Just hoping they'd be here, but, um, I'll touch base with them tomorrow to get an update.
So they, so they're actively working on it with staff?
Yep, they have a new engine, yeah, that from last year.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to continue this hearing to our next meeting?
I'll make the motion. Second.
All those in favor, Smara?
Aye.
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
So, John, you as an I, it is now continued. Other business, Commerce Drive bond reduction. You hanging around?
I know, they left.
You hanging around for that?
Well, yeah, and Steve O'Connell was on the computer, but he's not now.
Okay.
I can give you an update if you want.
Sure, give us a quick update, I don't think I'm gonna vote on it tonight.
The original. The original bond that was in place, um, Graves did in December twenty twenty one. They had a total amount of one point one seven eight million, approximately. Graves did the other, did another construction estimate for the proposed reduction and the new total they're looking to reduce it to is five hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars.
From what, Adam, again?
Five hundred and sixty seven thousand.
From what amount?
One point one million, one point two million. I'll cut it in half.
And what did, did uh, who analyze? And what did they say it should be?
Five sixty seven, five hundred and sixty seven thousand. So it's Graves did both analysis, both the original, which was approximately one point two million. And now the, the reasons looking to drop it to five hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars.
Graves said.
Yep.
Okay, and it, but it's up to us to set the number.
Yep.
And we can appeal it to them.
Yep.
I think we should maybe go to six fifty or something and just have a little extra in there to make sure if anything was missed. Doesn't hurt.
That's up to you, if you can do that.
Can we handle that with a motion?
Yep.
Your motion.
There isn't a meeting, no. So on this, on this Commerce Drive Bond Reduction, may I have a motion to make it six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the bond instead of one point two million?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, Samara?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Stayed.
We, uh, Rigs, myself, as an aye, it is a vote. Enshaw Street Solar Array Extension Request. For some odd reason, they're still being held up by National Grid.
Uh.
Don't know how long, how long can we keep extending this? Have they done any work there yet?
I don't think, you know, they've done anything. And from, when I talked to different people at National Grid and others, they said they're not sure they're gonna, they, they may not be accepting all of these because they, the amount of substation or new facility they have to build themselves to accept it and to utilize it is, it's just not something they want to do. I'm not sure if that's gonna happen, but it's uh,
I wasn't aware.
They, they could continue to just keep extending. I know some people have, that had options with them, just said, no more. Because it prevents them from selling the property to something else or doing something else with it.
I am on, sir. From, for the project. This is Adam Christie. Sorry to interrupt.
Okay, he's online.
Okay, you know you're online.
Yeah, I've been waiting around, uh, apologies, last two meetings have been canceled and uh, I stuck around tonight. So again, Adam Christie with Protech Energy, I'm the one that submitted the extension, uh, Vice President of Protech.
So how long do you think it is? Do you have any idea when National Grid is going to approve it?
So this actually isn't in National Grid's hands anymore. The first extension request that we had, um, I'd have to look at the letter, I'm trying to find now, but when we first made the extension request with uh, yourself, you know, the planning board and zoning, we weren't really giving a solid timeline. Well, National Grid has finally made their decision, which actually occurred in February of this year. And they've decided because of their impending uh, improvements, and I believe there is a substation planned in Auburn that sort of this project and others locally are kind of waiting on. So they've recommended that this project then be moved to a Department of Public Utilities Capital Investment Project Study. It's a mouthful, but we've been getting the runaround for a while. Um, obviously, this project was initially approved in March of twenty nineteen. Uh, and we have every intent, working with the landowner, to develop this project for solar. And, you know, we're hanging on by threads here, uh, because this project, this study, they didn't give us a timeline, but everything we've heard, you know, recently, they've met their deadlines that they've given us. And everything that we're hearing now for the completion of this second study should wrap up in about twelve months, which is why we're asking for the twelve month extension. I believe your bylaws states a six month, but you know, add a time, an extension, and the last time we extended, we were granted a twelve month. So in this case, the twelve month may cover us to the point where we then have to request an extension until the end of construction. So we, we need a definitive answer by the end of the year from the D P U on this. This isn't going to be held up in perpetuity. We're not gonna continue to make extensions. I mean, we've had a lot of money invested and time. The landowner has been involved with us for solar for, I think, seven years now, six or seven years. You know, he's been working with us in discussions, so we're really trying to get this to work out. And we don't want to hold the town or anybody hostage, this, this landowner. If he can't do solar, he may look to do something else. So that's, that's just where we stand. You know, unfortunately, our hands are tied, but we are confident that something's going to shake out and we're gonna have a much better answer from D P U and National Grid by the end of the year.
So you're saying that you would not request an additional one year if we granted that after that point?
Uh, if, if I remember correctly, it's not tw- it's not, um, I'm sorry. The site plan approval expiration date isn't just good until the issuance of a building permit. It has to be held until the end of construction. Uh, I believe that's what I was told last time. And I believe that is slightly different than zoning board, which requires that a building permit is issued prior to the expiration date. Am I correct in that assessment?
Yes, that, that, I believe that's correct.
So this, this twelve month request really takes us until we get a better understanding on whether or not the D P U, which is an unfortunate second study we got thrown into, is going to move this forward. Uh, at that point, we have to make a decision with the landowner, because like I said, he's been involved for so long. We've been involved, at, at some point, you know, this comes down to economics for us, for the landowner. And we would need a second extension beyond, or I should say a third. So the one we're requesting now takes us until we get more information from D P U. And then at that point, we'll have a decision we need to make with the landowner and these permits. Unrealistically, where things stand. Unfortunately, it's just an unknown with this D P U study. Which we hope takes twelve months. From what we hear, or I should say, uh.
Is this gonna be the last extension you asked for?
He's saying no, he needs more information.
No, this, no, yeah, exactly.
Say this will bring them to the end of the year, just from the utilities and the other people, then after that, they got all their other planning. But I mean, if at the end of the year, they got something consensual from those entities that says, yeah, okay, we're gonna let you do it, it's just a matter of time.
I think it's the bill.
But, but, you know, and I think maybe we should grant one more. Or even if it's a six month, or whatever it is, whatever the board wants to do, and then after that, really take a good look at it.
Good. Just, just for my understanding, so the, the project, uh, Chris, you said this is in, in it, so the study is now in the, in the D P U's hands and not uh, National Grid or I S O New England?
Correct. National Grid has recommended this, uh, for further evaluation at a, you know, much larger scale, uh, which is the capital investment project study. So what took forever with National Grid with no end in sight finally wrapped up. But we do have an understanding that this should take approximately till the end of the year with the D P U.
So even the, these studies, you know, they, they typically tend to provide some updates in the middle, um, can we?
Not really.
Not really?
Unfortunately, they don't, no. Uh, I'm a civil engineer by trade, not electrical engineer, but our, our interconnection team, you know, over the last few years since we've had our approval, as much as we've pushed National Grid, it's, you know, they tell us a date and they miss that date. Then they tell us another date, then they miss that date. And now that it's in D P U's hand, they don't have an end date. But everything that we've been hearing is that it's been taking twelve months and that, that is, uh, I'm sorry, eleven to twelve months, which is right from when we started the study in February. So we're hoping for a definitive answer by the end of the year.
Could read.
So the process is, they'll, they'll, um, they'll issue the results of their study and then at that point will be added to a queue for, um, system impact studies, which then will turn into an interconnection service agreement. So like, we'll know where this project is going at the completion. Or I should say when we're giving notice by D P U. Like, we'll know exactly the cost, uh, the plan, you know, what the engineering looks like on their end. So we will know which direction we'll have to go. It's just, that's gonna then take time for all of the projects that are in this study in the, um, what is it called? The Spencer Rutland, uh, area group. So there, there's multiple projects that are in this study, you know, the C I P now. And they'll then prioritize the projects and give us a list of who's gonna go first, second, third. And then essentially, that's how it gets resorted from D P U back to National Grid. And then they finish their system impact study, then they issue their I S As, so.
Not that far.
That could take some time.
Yep. So you're saying, other than yourself, at that location, there's others that will be in the bowl? And, you know, they're gonna have to approve them all. They may approve some, they may not approve some. So they're gonna have to go through them all? Is that what you're kind of saying?
Correct. They are studying a group of projects.
The D P U is making a decision on at the end of the year.
That is our hope by the end of the year, and that, that's what we're hoping to find out with this extension of twelve months. Is to have a better understanding of where we stand as a project amongst many, especially in this area of Auburn.
So.
With the improvements.
If this was resolved with National Grid by the end of the year, can you complete the job with a one year extension from now?
No, we cannot.
How long is the project supposed to take? Once you get started?
So if we were to get D P U approval by the end of the year, and then it was given back to National Grid, that, the time it would take for that would probably cover the current extension we are requesting. At that point, we would then request a third and hopefully final extension to cover us from construction to C O C.
Two years, basically.
Yeah.
From now until. So to, to the chair, they're asking for a twelve month extension, which is until June seventh, twenty twenty four. They're asking for the extension ahead of time.
Oh, okay.
So they can get done, but it's June seventh of next year, um.
So it's one year from
June seventh.
The last extension.
Yep.
I don't have a problem with that, but. Does anybody else have any objections? May I have a motion to approve the request for extension?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Rakesh? Ron?
Aye.
Myself, John Rigs, an aye, it is a vote. Got your extension.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
You too. Next on the agenda is modification of Flex Card five twenty five Auburn, Washington Street. Is anybody?
On the computer. It's on, on line.
Oh, yes?
Yep. We can't hear you. Nope. Still nothing. Um, if you want to try dialing it on your phone and just do a call that way, we get audio that way.
Sure, I'm just gonna log off from my computer.
There you go, now we got you.
Do we see this? No, I don't think so.
Can you give us a rundown of exactly what you want to do so everybody understands, even people that may be listening online?
Sorry, can, can you hear me now?
Uh, you're in and out.
Um, okay, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to log in on my phone to see if that might, might help. I'm sorry, I was just taking a minute.
Three hundred and sixty two is basically only needs five eighty cap.
Yes, that sounds right. Most of the site is just c- casket like this.
Also guys, Lux Auto moved. They took over the old Peros Auto.
Hmm?
They took over the old Peros.
If you do not have a kit, just press pound or hash.
Okay, I'm, I'm also on my phone now. Can you hear my audio now?
Kind of cutting in and out.
Um, how about now? Does that any better?
Yeah, keep trying, keep talking, and we'll see if it, you cut out again.
Okay. I'm gonna try logging off from my computer and just join on my phone.
I think we got you now.
Okay. Great.
So if you give us a rundown of the, the minor changes you want to make to the lot, we know it's an existing, it was an existing car, car lot, so.
Uh, sure, would it be, be helpful to provide an overview of Flex Card? Um, or just go straight to the, the site plan modification?
Uh, you go right to the site plan modifications, I think.
Okay, um, so we're really proposing four minor changes. Uh, we'll be restriping the lot, um, as reflects on the site plan. The restripes will generally reflect the, uh, what's on the lot right now. Um, I'm sorry, just one second, I'm getting a bad echo on my end. Okay, uh, let me try that again. Okay, I'm, I'm really sorry about that. Can you, can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you fine.
Okay, great. Um, so I'll just, uh, quickly start over. So the four main changes we're proposing are, we are uh, going to be preparing and sealing the lot, so we'll be also restriping as part of that process. When we restripe, it will generally follow the layout that's currently, um, at the site right now, that's reflected on the site plan. We'll be sure to maintain fire access as part of that restriping. Uh, then we'll also be, um, adding a, a fence around the side and back of the site. Uh, there's, there is a fence in place along a portion of the perimeter right now, but we'll be, uh, um, preparing what is there in some areas where it's in bad condition and then adding a fence in other areas where it doesn't exist. Um, and then we'll also be putting a, a gate on both the east and west sides of the building to uh, basically control access to the back end of the site. Um, we'll install a Knox box at the gate so that, uh, we can maintain emergency access to the back of the site. Uh, then we'll also be installing, uh, four new electrical vehicle chargers at the rear of the building. Those will just be charging our, our fleet vehicles and will not be, uh, chargers that are, um, available to the public. Uh, so that's a, a quick rundown of the changes we're proposing.
Um, if these gates are automated, does somebody have like a, a, a pass that's it's hung on the rearview mirror, something they drive up, that it opens, or a slide card for the gate to get it open? Or is it just automated from the inside of the building?
Uh, so they'll, they will be, basically during, during our hours of operations, they'll be unlocked. And then when we're, we're closed, not operating, they'll be locked and automated so that there'll be Knox box access. Um, and that way, when, uh, emergency personnel, if there is an emergency and need to access the rear of the site, they can automatically open the gate, um, with, through the Knox box.
How would they automatically open the gate? I'm, I'm kind of missing that. I'm, I'm kinda missing that. I mean, like a fire department.
Um, my. Sure, so my understanding, um, is, you know, it's fairly common for, uh, the, for fire departments to use these Knox boxes for access to security areas so that they would essentially have, um, some form of key to the box that would allow them to have access to the back of the site through this, uh, Knox box.
So they turn the key and the gate opens?
Right, my, my understanding, it's a little, it's a little, uh, more complicated than just like a, a standard key, but it's essentially like a, a means of emergency access that, um, that fire departments use from time to time. And our, uh, designer who prepared the plan also discussed this with, um, I believe with the, uh, the fire official, um, and confirmed this would be an acceptable solution.
I, I'm just trying to make sure that with the, the Knox box, if the fire department turns the key, the gate opens automatically. They don't turn the Knox box, it unlocks the gate, and they have to slide the gate manually?
Sixty-three hundred and sixty.
I think my gate's pretty heavy.
So it, it's automated once they unlock it, so it's not like they have to like manually pry the gate apart or anything like that.
All right, that's automatic then. Anybody have any questions? Any concerns? May I have a motion to approve?
I just have one question, Adam. Um, sorry, I apologize, John. Uh, is this the, I thought I saw a, a memo from Chief Lemon, uh, requesting cameras? Is that for this?
Recommending cameras.
Yeah, recommending cameras, et cetera, at this location. Have you, uh, reviewed that recommendation from the police chief?
Um, yes, sir, so we, we don't have a plan for cameras to open for when we open, um, but we, we took that suggestion into account. And our, our security manager, um, would like to install cameras at some point in the future. Um, but we, our understanding was that was a, a suggestion, um, not a requirement, and we, we're def- we're definitely taking that into account, uh, as part of our security program.
I think it would be advantageous for you if you did have the cameras, because if somebody gets into that lot, starts wreaking havoc with all these cars that are parked there, without cameras, you won't have any idea. You won't have a clue who did it.
Certainly, yeah, and we, um, you know, the, the fence and gate will enhance what's there in terms of security, and, uh, we do have other sites where we installed cameras. And my guess is our security manager will like to go that route here in the relatively near future.
These are electrified what, fans?
So, so Adam, is, is, is the camera issue recommendation by Chief Lemon something that we can condition on this vote?
You can, I mean, it's, it's kind of at their risk not to have them.
Right, yes, their own risk.
On a public safety thing.
The chief can't require it, it's just a recommendation.
Okay, so it's just, the chief cannot requirement, require it, it's just a recommendation?
Yeah, it's for their benefit to have it and.
For their benefit.
They have their risk not.
Just wanna make sure that we're taking into account the opinions of our public safety officials.
That's a kind of a standard comment for all projects, they use cameras.
Okay.
Any other questions or concerns?
Uh. We need two motions, one that it is a minor modification that, uh.
May I have a motion that this is considered a minor, uh, modification?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Smara?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Ron.
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Myself, John Riege and I, may I have a motion to approve this, um, minor modification?
I'll make, good. I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Smara?
Aye.
Barkesh, Ron.
Aye.
Aye.
Myself, John Riege and I, it is a vote. It's been approved. You're all set.
Thank you, everybody.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, next on the agenda is the meeting minutes of one twenty-four, twenty twenty-three. May I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes as submitted?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Smara?
Aye.
Barkesh?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Myself, John Riege and I, it is a vote. Uh, I have no unforeseen business. Does the town planner have an update?
Two very, very brief ones. We're looking for an associate planning member still. We'd love to have one. Um, and pre-town meeting is April twenty-fifth. There was a couple zoning changes. Those will be here at the next meeting, but there's a pre-town meeting for the residents, or when they're interested on the twenty-fifth, in this room at six P M. That's all I have.
Nothing else from anybody? No concerns? May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, Smara?
Aye.
Aye.
Barkesh?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Myself, John Riege and I, it is a vote. The meeting is now adjourned.